Hello, everybody, and welcome to the final meeting of 2023. It is December 18th. I am Edie Grinning, Board Chair. Welcome to the Mount Mansfield Unified Union School District Board Meeting. We have a full agenda tonight. I'm just going to run through that pretty quickly. We have, as always, we start with community comments. Then we have the most, the latest information on the budget with some updates for folks, our conversation with legislators. Then we have the library policy that we warned at a previous meeting to approve. We want to do a quick discussion about Board Governance Compliance Review and hopefully get some volunteers to run that for us this year. An opportunity for some committee reports. And then minutes need to be improved from our previous meeting. And if there is any other business, we have that at the very end of the meeting. So, Pat, jam-packed meeting. Are there any updates, modifications, changes? If you want me to do roll call first, Ethan, or is this about the agenda? Because I figured I'd just go to roll call next. Go ahead.
Well, just the agenda. I don't know if you want to add rab to that.
Oh, yeah, we definitely should add rab to committee. Well, that'll be part of, nope, it's not even on there. Yes.
It's not on there.
Add rab to that, thank you. All right, anything else on the agenda? Awesome. Pat, I think we have a few more folks join as I was just getting started. Would you mind calling roll for us?
For sure. Hi, Tara Arneson.
Here.
Kevin Campbell.
Here.
Heather Chadwick.
She'll be a few minutes late.
Allison Conant. Gail Conn. Sorry, Gail Connolly.
Gail's here also.
She's here.
Eric Gildermeister.
He will not be joining us tonight.
Edie Grinning.
I'm here.
Diane Kirsten Glipman.
I'm here.
She's on screen. She's waving at you. Not tonight, or maybe in a few minutes.
Okay, Ethan Maurer.
Here.
Stuart Marisjo.
Here.
Katie Nelson.
Here.
Lisa Pollak.
Here.
Andrew Pond.
He can't join us tonight.
And then student reps, we have Abby O'Malley.
Here.
And Gracie Batsy.
Yeah, we started right on time tonight because we had a forum right on time. So folks might be just rolling in in a few minutes. But thank you. And we are still working to update the land acknowledgement, but I have a feeling we're going to have something on that soon. Maybe that's just a feeling. We'll see, thank you. All right, community comments. Is there anybody here from the community or representing community comments tonight? Not seeing anyone. We can come back to that if folks join the meeting later. All right, John and Nicole, let's get a budget update presentation. Thank you.
So Jeff, should I share or would that be easier? Or would, do you want to share the presentation on the screen?
I can share, John, if you would like.
That'd be great. Okay. So, thank you, everybody, for being here tonight. We have a few budget informational slides, trying to be pretty as concise as we can be. Some of them I'm going to go over and then some Nicole will go over. So we're going to share the presentation together. And you can either interrupt and let us know if you have a question during the presentation or you can wait till the end. And we have a slide that says questions. And could you go on to the next slide, Jeff? So here's some of the considerations and the challenges that we've had so far. First, we don't have all the information that we need from the state to know exactly what our pupil count is, what state revenue is going to look like, or what the school funding formula is going to look like. That we really won't know until the budget is been voted on or at least has been approved by the board in February to get a better idea of what the influence is going to be on the formula for the whole state. Typically, in February is when people, most, you know, almost 80 or more percent of budgets have been decided on and have been warned. So we'll have a lot better information then. And we really won't know until the legislature makes a decision during this legislative session. So some of the other considerations and challenges, we had a higher increase in our employee health insurance at 16.4% than we had been estimating. And also inflation, the cost of materials, resources, services, and our employee contracts have increased. We had budgeted 6.5% for teachers last year. And we ended up settling at 6.5 and we have a 6.5% increase this year. So, you know, that equals a change of 9%. And that's, you know, that has an influence on this budget as well. Then just facility needs. You've heard me say this before, our buildings are, you know, they're getting older and we need to maintain them every year. And we've also, there have been some state mandates that have, that are going to impact us financially, which are lead testing for the water, radon testing, PCB testing, which around the river, that will happen in a couple of days, the end of December. I emailed the board about that. We informed the community as well. Yeah, stormwater mitigation and treatment, which is another mandate from the state that affects all of our schools but one. And then just some of the security requirements too that we need to follow. And then probably the biggest challenge consideration has been Act 127. There's been a lot of moving parts, Act 127 so far. And I think that has made it more difficult for boards across the state, superintendents, school officials to fully understand the impact. And so we're learning more and more every day and trying to figure out how can we communicate this effectively. There are still some things that we do not know. And I'll try to hit on those and Nicole will as we go through the presentation. Jeff, so I'm not going to go over this with you, but I do want to put it up here. And I will read it to you, but this is an overview that we've been sharing as much and as often as we can. It just talks about the philosophy and the underpinnings of Act 127 and some of the mechanics where, you know, we're not using equalized pupils anymore. We're using long-term weighted pupils. So the terminology has changed. Some of the numbers have changed. But, you know, what we know is that Mount Mansfield is a district that is going to be disadvantaged over the long term by Act 127. And we're going to lose tax capacity because proportionately, we will have, you know, we will have fewer weighted students than other districts that have students that are English, more students that are English language learners and more students that are considered economically disadvantaged. So there's not more new money necessarily in the bill. So the money's going to have to come from somewhere and it's going to be spread across the state. And the caps that are going to be influencing disadvantaged districts, you know, that money's going to have to be made up in the ed funding formula and across every school district in Vermont. So our approach is trying to educate the community as much as we can, better understand 127, contain costs and contain costs that are reoccurring costs as much as possible while meeting the needs of students and, you know, using our budget priorities and our district priorities at our ends to, when we're developing a budget. Jeff? So this slide just shows the five-year trends in enrollment. We're estimating we're going to go down nine students, nine students next year. I mean, honestly, that could go up over the next six months or down a little. So the era of measurement is pretty close here. And so really, our enrollment is going to be static. You know, that's what we're estimating. We're currently, we're putting together our preschool enrollment. But when I talked to our preschool coordinator, Kyle shared that, Kyle Hibbert, that it looks like we're going to have almost the same number of preschool students, both students that are taking advantage of qualified vouchers and our school-based programs as we do this year. So our enrollment is going to be, is going to be flat. So we're not going to have a lot of room and I wouldn't recommend reducing any staff for next year. Jeff? And I'm going to turn this over to our Director of Facilities, of Finance and Operations, which includes facilities, Nicole Fortier.
Hello. So this is a slide you're all familiar with and have seen already. These are the budget drivers. I won't go through all of the lines. I'm sure you will know the capital projects. And we've labeled that specifically as one-year funding, as this is one-year funding. And this is not anything that will add to the long-term expenditures. We will get into that in greater detail shortly. But again, John has already spoke to the salary and wages increase, the 16.4% increase in health insurance. So nothing big there. You can go to the next one, Jeff. This is just our visual representation of the total expenditure increase year over year with the one-time capital money. That's what's driving up that expenditure or that 18.72% in '25. You can go to the next, there we go. So again, a visual representation of how our tax rate have changed over the last couple of years. You'll note that '23 and '24 were significant decreases largely due to the ed fund surplus money. And it's also worth noting that our tax rate in '25, our projected tax rate in '25 is under the FY '23 tax rate that included that ed fund surplus money and significantly, significantly under the '22 tax rate. Without the cap, without the 5% cap, the tax rate would be 1.5954. I see Allison's raised a hand.
Hi. Hi. Just to be clear, this, this 5% is specific just to taxes related to education funding? Like it doesn't take into account other factors that might be driving the tax rate in the district? Is that correct?
Pre-CLA, I think, is that, is that your question?
I have to apologize, I don't know what CLA means.
The Common Level of Appraisals. So what is layered in on top of the homestead tax rate?
Yeah.
Yes, this 5% is pre-CLA.
Okay. So I think it's important to acknowledge, though, that the residents, I can only speak to Richmond, but I know there's been significant adjustments to folks' taxes this year separate from, from what we're talking about from the education budget.
Yeah, generally later in the budgeting process, we don't have the CLA information from the state yet, unfortunately. So when we put the budget flyer out, we try to touch on not only the homestead tax rate, but then layering in CLA to give folks that information. We just unfortunately don't have that yet. But thank you.
Thanks.
I'm just going to add that generally after a town has been assessed, then the CLA gives them a decrease in their rate before the towns get assessed. So if Richmond, which I believe has recently been assessed, that will be a benefit to them in the end. But we can talk about, we can look at the numbers when we have them in January.
Yeah, absolutely. You can go to the next slide, Jeff. Okay, there's a lot of layers here, so we will take this one piece by piece. So I want to point out first of all that FY '24, you'll note, is labeled as restated for Act 127. So the AOE provided us information specific to our long-term weighted pupils. They restated our 24 pupils to be in line with Act 127. And I air quote and caveat that with, this is not a perfect apples-to-apples comparison. I say that because weights, the weights that are used are the same. However, in '25, they introduced Medicaid-eligible students into our free and reduced lunch counts, which is what the economically disadvantaged count is. So those numbers were not available or the AOE is telling us that that information is not available to restate in our FY '24 numbers. So while this is supposed to be a perfect comparison, it's, it's very much not. And unfortunately, this is just the best information that we have at this time. So also note the significant decrease in the property yield. As our long-term weighted ADM is no longer being equalized, the yield is significantly decreased to account for this. And again, that number is subject to change and very well could change. But I do think it's important to note that if that number does change, if the yield is driven further down, that change won't impact us. We will still see the benefit of the 5% tax rate cap. So, you know, if the AOE determines based on how districts are changing their spending that the yield needs to go down, our tax rate will not change. I noted before that, again, that is the number you're seeing there for our homestead tax rate is inclusive of the 5% cap. The rate would be about 1.5954 without the cap. Again, I'll just caveat this with, unfortunately, this is the best information that we have at this time. And we'll, we'll wait to see what the AOE comes back with on updates. John, do you have anything you want to add to that?
Only that, we're not, we're, we're pretty far away from the 10% increase in education spending per pupil. So, you know, we're, what that does is gives us the ability to add some non-reoccurring items to the budget and it will not influence the tax rate.
Absolutely.
So for example, and we'll get into it in the next slide, we've added approximately $5,675,000 for facilities. And that's money that we can spend on things like HVAC, if we do have some PCB medication, stormwater and updating some of our systems. And it would not be reoccurring money and it would not influence the tax rate.
Yes.
With the cap.
Yeah, so I just, I'm hoping that board members who weren't on the Finance Committee are looking at this and saying, how come we were panicked? Act 127, things were supposed to be really, really stressed for us and this doesn't look like that? Am I, is anybody, I don't see faces, but is anybody looking at that thinking, what am I missing here?
Yes.
Good, good, because that's what you should be thinking. So I'm just going to go back to what Nicole said. The Agency of Education is giving us this fiscal year 24 people long-term weight, the ADM number, the second line of 33, 45, 24, which is fewer students than we have this year. And we were expecting that number to drop by about 300 students. For some reason, it went up by about 300 students. We don't know why. There is some information that says that the Agency of, we do know why. We know why because in fiscal year '25, the new numbers, the Agency of Education has included all of the poverty data. And in fiscal year '24, they're telling us they don't have the data, so they can't weight the pupils properly. That's the information that we're getting. So that's the discrepancy, which gives us a lot of room to stay between that 5 and 10% cap, right? The 5% means, if you're, I guess, I'll just leave it like that. So there is a chance that the Agency of Education will give us better numbers for fiscal year '24. But the whole point of changing over to the system was to adjust the amount of money every school gets based on, based on the amount of, you know, poverty and needs that the school has, right? Poverty, scarcity in English language learners are the three main weighting drivers and then age of student also. But if the '24 numbers aren't what they should be, like aren't apples-to-apples, like Nicole was saying with '25, then you never get that. You don't have the right starting number. So the percent change will never be the number that we were trying to hit. I don't think I'm explaining it as well as I did earlier today. But so we're weighting, right? If the Agency of Education can get us better numbers, then we will have a bigger problem than we do right now. But right now, the numbers look really good for our district. And a six-cent tax increase is roughly $120 for a $600,000 house. So that's what it looks like right now. And that's the number that shouldn't change even if the Agency of Education gives us different numbers, right? This is where, but we could end up with a softer landing when the cap is lifted. Yeah, go ahead.
I'm just really glad that we have legislators on this call because this is a terrible position to be in. I mean, just to have all this ambiguity, it seems like the dice was rolled and we are, we lucked out a little bit here. But the lack of accountability here is really concerning to me. And I know that this is not coming from our district level. But this kind of black box formula is just, is very concerning. The way a lot of this has gone down is frankly very concerning to me. So I'm glad we have legislators here. I hope there is a lot of discussion of accountability in this upcoming legislative session and clarity that comes forth in this next legislative session from discussions between our representatives and the Agency of Education. I think personally, I feel like a lot of these decisions were made without a lot of awareness within our community about the impact. And as a board member, it's felt, I felt very disempowered trying to track all of this. And it just feels like we're crossing our fingers. I guess just even in this conversation, I appreciate the level of information. I appreciate the detail in this presentation. But I feel very disempowered and not sure what to share with constituents when these conversations come up.
That's really fair. And yeah, the agency was supposed to track, was supposed to have the data for this year and it's not there. And yeah, and we have to have budgets in by early January so that we can vote on them in early March. And we don't know when the information will be here. So we're all in a bind and totally understand that. All right, we have five minutes until we move to the next thing and we can always come back to this one. But I just wanted folks to really understand that this is not what we were expecting to present and we're quite surprised. Back to you, Nicole.
So I'm going to, I'm going to take this slide. And it's a little bit busy, but I think if I walk through it carefully, Nicole, she'll understand it. So I'm going to start at the top. And what I'm trying to, what we're trying to show here is what we would need to cut to get below the 5% tax cap. So what's the dollar, you know, to get to 4.95%, what would we need to do? Does that make sense to everybody? What would we need to cut financially? And it comes out to $4,443,670. So that's a lot of money to be cutting from a budget where your enrollment is flat. And going back and taking a look at the fact that we've been able to keep our tax rate either going down or flat because we have been really thoughtful about the way we have budgeted. Now, I thought that this, that figure was going to be more because we were using FY '24 numbers to calculate the dollar amount. And that would have been, using FY '24 numbers would have been 6.5 million. Any questions? I want to go slow here. So, so what we did do is we said, you know, it might be a little more than this. Well, what would we need to do? Well, essentially, we'd need to cut about 60 staff members. And right now, you know, we can't, we have a few positions we can't fill. We are not overstaffed by any means. And so, you know, I've been really trying to be very clear with the Finance Committee that, that we really should not be reducing any staff members. And if we do, then we're really, with no hyperbole, you know, we're, we're not going to be, we certainly couldn't meet the needs of students. You couldn't maintain the Vermont quality standards or meet, you know, our special education obligations, our 504 obligations or state and federal requirements. So, you know, for us to say that we're going to bring our budget under that 5% cap would have a really detrimental effect on our whole school system. We couldn't run it effectively. So wanted to make that abundantly clear to the board. And we have shared this with the, with the Finance Committee. But if, to try to give you a comparison of more apples-to-apples, if using the budget numbers that we have right now, including that 5.6 or 5.7 million dollars for facilities, if we didn't have those new Medicaid-eligible students in our economically disadvantaged count, then our, we would need to cut, you know, 8.145 million or 109 positions. So that's like astronomical. It's not something we can do. It's certainly nothing that I would recommend. So this is kind of an important slide. Now, if the Agency of Education comes back with more comparable numbers, this could change, right? And our long-term weighted pupils or our pupil count, it's in draft two. The AOE has said it's a strong draft. They don't anticipate it's going to change, but it could. Now, when we met with the Finance Committee last week, we had a long conversation about a lot of different components. But we, we did land on an option for the school district to consider, which is, you know, it's going to be almost impossible for us to, or impossible. I mean, I guess you could, maybe theoretically or possibly you could hit that, but it would be so detrimental to students and the whole school community. You know, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be feasible. But we know we're going to have a 5% cap, you know, because we are disadvantaged and we are the, one of the school districts that's most disadvantaged in the state according to the information and the data that's been shared with us by the Agency of Education. And we have an opportunity because of that cap to add some much-needed funds to our facilities that would be non-reoccurring. You can't really call it one time because at some point, you're going to need a fix-up boiler. But it would be expenses that are going to take a long time for us to need to spend again. And as we move forward, And as we move forward under Act one-twenty-seven, eventually, there will be a point where we're gonna be paying the full tax rate. And these are costs that we would not have to expend when we are under, you know, the full disadvantaged status. So the committee, and I think the administration, felt like it was something that we want to move forward with. We had definitely had the facility needs. And it's an opportunity to spend some one-time or long-term funds that doesn't have an impact on our tax rate. So if the, and Nicole mentioned this, but I think it's worth repeating, if that base yield amount goes down, our tax rate is going to be the same. So this is an opportunity for us to upgrade our facilities and have a long-term financial impact on the district that is positive. This is our last slide, but I want to, you know, I want to take questions. Because I want to make sure that folks understand the opportunity, the option that is available to the school district. You know, I would say that the Finance Committee had, you know, an in-depth and a thoughtful conversation about this. So it is, it is an opportunity, it is an option for our school district at this time.
Go ahead, Ethan.
Just, so I understand this idea is that we're adding a six-million-dollar capital improvement line item to our budget because of the opportunities. So it's, and if that's the case, where are we? Is there going to be a different, you know, presentation on what that six million looks like? Or is it just a rainy day capital improvement fund?
No, we, you know, this is something that we decided on last Thursday. So we would itemize the facilities needs that we would address. We certainly have them. Good question.
Other questions? And if there are folks from the Senate and the House that want to ask questions, please don't hesitate. Ethan?
Just sorry, and I know ED told me to go to the Finance Committee meetings, but that's not feasible.
This is a finance presentation.
Yes, perfect. That's why I'm gonna feel good about asking this question. So is the fuel underground tank included in that six-million-dollar? Or is it still in the budget as far as a capital expense?
No, we're looking at an above-ground tank. We would need, we do need to remove that tank.
It's not a list yet, so it could end up in the list, right? The removal of the tank.
Yeah, but we'd have to do that anyway. I mean, that's just our obligation. Currently, we're not looking at an underground tank.
Representative Wood? You're welcome to ask a question. I don't know if you're frozen, Teresa. Are you there? Oh, she just left. She must have frozen. Senator Lyons, you have a question for us?
Yes, I do. Actually, a quick question related to the underground tank. You should be eligible, I would think, for the petroleum cleanup fund support for that. So that, unless you've looked into it and understand that you can't do that.
I'll have to ask our facilities director, but we'll make sure I let him know there might be some funds available.
Yeah, so the underground tank fund is available to clean up any petroleum tank that is old or leaking or needs to be replaced. And currently, I mean, it's done a lot for our local gas stations, but it's also done for homes and I would think schools as well. So it might be helpful to connect with Department of Environmental Conservation, and I'll try to, I'll try to make that happen. I'll try to do that myself when I get a minute.
Thanks a lot. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you. Representative Wood?
Hi, thank you. I just want to make sure I understand this, the six-million dollars. So from what I understand you saying, John, it sounds like that you would fully expense that six-million-dollar capital improvement in one year and not bond because you're capped at the five percent. Is that right?
Yeah, would influence our facilities expenses down the road. You know, we were anticipating we might need a bond in FY twenty-seven. So we'd be able to reduce the impact of that by expending these funds. Does that make sense?
Oh, yeah, it definitely makes sense. It just, it means everybody else in the state picks it up, essentially. That's what I'm gathering on this because we're capped at five percent.
Yep, yes. I mean, there's not gonna be no new money.
Right, and it's, and it's a one-time, you're not, you're not building the base per se because it's not ongoing operating. It's a capital expense. Right?
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Well, I hope not a lot of schools do that, to be perfectly honest.
Well, we were really concerned about that because we're concerned about the pressures on the ed fund. And the Agency of Education is recommending that schools do it, which is fascinating. And, right? So there's, there's, yeah.
Yeah, I suspect the legislature will have a different view of that. We'll see. I'm not, I'm not sure. And it's, I appreciate, I'm sorry I joined a little bit late, but I, like, like we were, you were talking about earlier, Mount Mansfield was one of the most impacted school districts. So it is a little bit curious to see that AOE has reduced that impact potentially.
Twenty-twenty-four pupil numbers, they're saying that they can't get any closer than what they have. As of today, Emily Kornheiser thinks that there will be a better number coming out. But the information that we are directly getting from the AOE is that this is the best number that they can give us. So we're in a, we're not sure what to do at this point.
And it doesn't just impact Mount Mansfield. Everybody's number is going up.
Right, right, yeah. I get that. It's a, it's a more-than-one-school-district issue. Okay, thank you. I wanted to make sure I understood what you were saying.
So there'll be a lot of school districts that probably are getting farther from that ten percent, if that makes sense.
Yes.
All right. Any other questions on the budget? And this is something we wanted to talk with legislators about. So I think it's okay that it's cutting into some of that time, maybe?
We could go back and
Kevin?
Yeah, I mean, it's not a question, ED. I'm on the Finance Committee, so I think I was part of the in-depth conversation. But just to respond to some of the other comments, I don't, I don't think we have a choice. I don't think we did anything to put ourselves in this position. This was the outcome of Legislative and Agency of Education giving us two really bad options. One option is to cut the budget for five million dollars in order to stay below a five percent artificial, but a five percent cap. The other option is to accept the five percent cap and take advantage of the additional money that we could get because it's capped. Which option, if you were a steward of the school district, which option would you pick? Right? I mean, you have to go with maximizing your opportunity, figure out how much you need to put into your budget to take advantage of the cap that the state has provided. We have lots of expenses that we can use that money for. We even talked about, what if we can't spend it all? You know, and there are ways in which you could carry it forward to future years as well. So I don't see any downside, other than this is a horrible position for us to be in, but we have to do it.
Thank you for saying that, Kevin. And I would just love to hear from our legislators who are on the call, who could maybe give us a little context about some of the thought process that brought us to this spot. Certainly, we're in a position to deal with the outcome of it. And I would say that I don't feel there was a very robust conversation within our community leading up to this. And so here we are trying to make a little bit of lemonade. Kudos to the Finance Committee for what they've done to get us here so that we're not picking our jaws up off of our little Zoom desks as we look at this today. But would love to have a little context from our legislators to help us understand what preceded some of what brings us here to this conversation today. And I welcome comment from any of our elected representatives on that.
So I'm just gonna introduce folks real quick so that everybody knows who's here. And I'm gonna do it based on where folks are on my Zoom screen. We have Representative Wood, who is here representing, help me if I get this wrong, Waterbury, Bolton, Huntington, Jonesville, maybe, Beals Gore, maybe. I don't know.
Close. Waterbury, Bolton, Beals Gore, and Huntington.
Great, thank you. We have Senators Lyons and Chittenden, who are, I'm gonna get this wrong, representing Underhill, Jericho, Bolton, Richmond, and then South Burlington and Williston. How'd I do?
St. George, Shelburne, and Charlotte, and a little bit of Burlington.
Great, thank you. Trevor Squirrel is here representing Jericho and Underhill. And Janet Brown is here representing Richmond. Did I miss anybody? I'm here as a school board member, so happy to wear the other hat another day. Yes, okay. So anybody in the legislature want to start a conversation with us? We have things that we want to talk about with you. We want to hear what we have as priorities. And Allison has already posed a YF one-twenty-seven and how did we get here kind of question.
So I'll take a stab at it. Jan is on the ed committee, so she'll pipe in, I'm sure. So this change in Act one-twenty-seven is, honestly, I know it feels like penalizing school districts. I have two school districts, yours and the one where I live, both who are, you know, dramatically impacted in a negative way by Act one-twenty-seven. And the thing that I told the Harwood Union School District is the same thing that I will tell you. This, this
Oh, shoot. We lost Teresa. Janet, do you want to jump in?
Hi, can you all hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, great. I think I might drop off too. I'm not sure if, I'm not sure what's happening, but my internet connection is also unstable. So I actually glitched a little bit at the end of what Teresa was, or what Representative Wood was saying. So, but I can try to pick up. It might be a little awkward because I can't actually see all of you. But so I joined the Legislature and the House Education Committee in 2021. And I think, as Representative Wood was saying, this discussion around people waiting.
Go for it, Jenny.
Teresa came back. Let her go, and then I'll go for it.
Okay, I'm gonna try to do it quickly in case I get cut off again, which I, it looks like I'm on the screen twice. Don't ask me how. But so this is, the change in the formula really goes back to a research study done by the University of Vermont. And you might find this interesting, but the weights that were in effect prior to what we have right now that are being implemented this year really had no basis in any kind of science. Had no basis in, in really facts. It was really things that sort of evolved over time.
And so the UVM study and analysis, and I happened to be on the Education Committee when the report was brought in. The weights had not been adjusted or evaluated in years. I don't remember exactly how many years. Maybe Senator Chittenden does because he and I served on the committee together. So the work of UVM research brought back some estimates for weights based, that are related very much to the cost and how much it costs to care for, provide education for students of each individual type, whether it's socioeconomic status, need for linguistic skills, language skills. And one of the driving forces, of course, was the number of kids who were coming into some towns and cities who required English as a second language and required those services. So the whole discussion on weights began with that. And it was driven by some folks in the Department of Education. It was driven by folks in Burlington, Winuski, that are in our county and also from other places in the state where, where pretty much where language skills are needed. So we worked long and hard in the Education Committee discussing this, but it ultimately was left up to our Finance and Ways and Means Committees to determine how to move forward. It, one of the issues that was brought up, and I think Allison is, I don't know if it helps or not, but there was a whole group of legislators and folks in the agency who wanted to implement change immediately. And that seemed really irrational because, you know, for a lot of reasons, not the least of which is how budgets are constructed at the local level. So the change that we're seeing coming forward in 2025, that, that's, we put that off. So I don't know, I do know that I heard from a number of school boards, visited with school boards in my district at time, at that time, it was a bigger district than it is now. And so we did, we did talk with folks, but it is a shock. And then when you see the list, thank you, Teresa, you're right, poverty, our socioeconomic status is a key element in the weighting. So the things that hadn't been fully considered or were poorly considered in the past are now in the weights. It's unfortunate that towns in our district are affected negatively, and they are. I know South Burlington is. I know that you are. And so the list, as we looked at the list, it was, it was very informative. But it was also unfortunate that some schools are going to be negatively affected. Ultimately, it all theoretically sugars off based on who students are within the district. So I'll stop there and hand it over to Senator Chittenden or if Representative Wood is back. You're muted.
Yeah, we can't hear you. You don't look like you're muted on the screen. Maybe you are. No, something's not working. You're not muted and we can't hear you. Maybe leave the meeting and come back. That usually works, but not always.
Can you hear me? All right. All right about that. I don't usually use Google. So I'll just say a couple of things, and I'll turn it to Representative Wood. One, this came about because my understanding is kids don't, kids cost different amounts. Kids with learning disabilities, kids in rural communities, kids on free and reduced lunch and poverty lines. And so the weights, which were established in the wake of the Act sixty, and I always forget the name of that, Supreme Court ruling back in ninety-six, they hadn't been updated in twenty-plus years. And so they added some new weights, and we, it was not necessarily a guessing game, but there is a great deal of uncertainty that but there is a great deal of uncertainty that MMU is, MMUSD is wrestling with, as well as other school districts. And so this coming legislative session is absolutely a time when I think we can and will look at adjusting both the clarity and how do we communicate these things. With the presentation that I just saw, the one concern I have is all of this money is coming from the same pot. And so if communities like MMU raise and actually exceed the amount covered, beyond the 5%, that still has to come from somewhere. And so what I believe that will actually do is actually lower the overall yield. So as much as your tax rate, your dollar per, the 1.52, might only go up 5%. When you do the math out based on the yield, I'm worried that everybody's is going to gradually come up. But I do understand that the Legislature has some levers. If you look at one graphic that I can dump into the chat here, this is from 2021 to the Public Assets Institute, when they wrote about this. And 25% of our Ed Fund comes from our primary, from our household holds, property taxes from our households. The other 75% comes from two dominant sources, sales tax, rooms and meals, lotteries, non-homesteads. One thing I think that we can look at, and I definitely encourage us to, and we started these conversations this past session, is other revenue streams that can subsidize the property tax burden that I anticipate from a variety of reasons, including the ones that you're all wrestling with. The sugary sweetened beverage tax came up, possibly fund universal meals. There are some that are advocating for a cloud tax. I also think we need to look more closely at non-homesteads. Right now, I don't believe our property tax code allows for enough distinguishing between stores, factories, ski areas, and second homes sitting dormant on our hillsides. So looking at ways to properly assess and tax darkened doors would be a way to reduce the burden on Vermonters staying here, while maybe more fairly collecting it from other sources. It is a complex formula, and probably said some things wrong there. Happy to turn it back to you, Representative Wood. But I too am looking for greater clarity as to how the impacts of districts like yourselves, exceeding the 5% increase, are going to affect everybody across the board, because that seems to be a lot of uncertainty.
Great, thank you. Ethan?
I also think it's important, while this is a pretty dramatic change in the last couple of years, this has been an issue that has been looming in front of us for a lot longer. The reality is, is that zoning decisions, building decisions, have led us to exclude the students that are weighted heavier, and they are concentrated in communities that are seeing that benefit now. So while it's very frustrating to feel this impact, the reality is, is this is a bed that we made by decisions, not this school board particularly, but our communities. And I think it's really important, as we look to the future, how are we going to increase our tax base? And, you know, whether it's looking at the residential or non-residential rate or other pieces, those all have to be part of the conversation. So I don't necessarily think it's the legislators or the legislative fault to change this, because certainly you can see the positive impact it will have in different communities. But how do we, as a community, address the issue that we are a very wealthy district? And that is, the bottom line of this is that we do not have English language learners living in our community, and we have a very low poverty rate for our student population.
All that is fair, and the transition is painful. So I think that both of those, we need to hold both of those thoughts at the same time and really be mindful as we do these things going forward. I just wanted to jump in on something that Ethan said, because I don't see any hands up. So if somebody else wants to touch, pop a hand up. But I'm going to take the prerogative here. As we're looking forward, there's a lot of discussion about tech ed and how we're going to change that, and that we need to change the structure and the funding. And I have real concerns about changing the funding first, the way we're doing this, and how that is going to look at long run, and how that has been impacted. Again, the Ed Fund, by not changing policy first, by not changing structure first, we could be making a mistake. So I'm just going to pop that out there while I have the opportunity. And now we have a lot of people with their hands up. So go ahead, Kevin.
Do we want to hear some comments on the tech ed before another topic?
I just was taking the opportunity to say some.
Well, another topic to raise, which gets to one of the reasons why we feel, one of the reasons why I think we feel compelled to take advantage of the opportunity that this current framework and structure has given us, is the amount of deferred maintenance that we have in our district. We have not taken a bond in over a decade. We have not been given any opportunity from the state for any kind of capital improvements. And when we look in the future, it's going to get harder, not easier, for us to fund those projects. And so why not do them now? If we have an opportunity to do that. At some point, the Ed Fund is going to have to pay for them. The buildings will collapse, and we have to build new ones. So we're looking at this as an, again, as an opportunity, accelerate it. And I think accelerate is probably not the best word, because it's been deferred for so long. We're looking at, you know, our buildings getting hotter, not colder, and students having a more difficult time learning when it's so hot and the school extending into June is getting warm. And so investing in HVAC, as well as cleaner air, I think all those things make sense. And that's some of the projects we've been talking about. But, you know, I'm interested in hearing if there is going to be any opportunity for other funding to be made available for those projects? Or is it still a not this year type of situation?
So before we go to the next question, I don't know if any of the legislators would like to comment or respond to that.
I'll just, I'll just say, it's certainly going to be a conversation. I think there's a lot of interest in the Legislature in talking about some, some type of school construction funding and support. Whether it can happen as quickly as this year, I don't know. Some of it depends, clearly depends on what's in the governor's budget, and then what federal dollars we might be able to leverage as match. We currently have what's known as a revolving loan fund, and those are for improvements to sewer and wastewater, wastewater treatment, or stormwater. And so it's a revolving loan fund. It's put, there's priorities put in place at the county level through your Chittenden County Regional Planning Commission, for example. But what we need to do, I think, is to have some kind of either revolving loan or outright grants or matching something, because I agree with, I agree with you. Our schools are getting older, and we have not really had the opportunity for improvement, for repair, or for new construction, as we might have seen in the past. So will it happen this year? I can't answer that, yes or no. But it will be something for very fruitful discussion.
Yeah, thank you. And I should, you know, you mentioned stormwater mitigation, which is something that, whether we get a loan for it or not, we're still going to have to pay. So I like the word grant. We also have PCB remediation, that we have no idea whether that's $0 or infinite dollars to have to deal with. And we're starting our first test in a few weeks. And we have absolutely no, no, no plan for remediation. Eventually, we're going to be, you know, just like other school districts, where now we have a crisis on our hands, because we've done testing, and no funds available to mitigate it. So that alone, I think, is justification for trying to make, you know, give us as much opportunity in the near term for, for funding that we seem to have available. So lots out there.
Jana, did you raise your hand to answer?
Oh, sure. I was just, in response to Kevin's question, was going to jump in on the school construction issue. So there is a legislatively created school construction task force that met over the late summer, early fall, and I think maybe just finished one of their final meetings in recent weeks. So we will, there is a group actively looking to reestablish a statewide school construction program. And there's a report due back to the Legislature, I believe, in the middle of February, so that we can look at what they have been working on, you know, and consider what our options are moving forward. And just want to say that I also absolutely share your concern around the PCB testing program and all of the potential impacts that could have, not only for our district, but across the state. I think we've all heard some really disturbing stories about how disruptive and challenging that's been. A lot of really valid questions around funding. I will say, the House Education Committee has been really committed to trying to deal with the PCB issue in a really comprehensive way that's wrapped up in our school construction conversation. And I think there's a recognition that those are, it's really important to sort of consider those in tandem.
Thank you. Tara?
I'm just really grateful that you're all here to engage in this conversation with us. I also sit on the V S B A Board of Directors. And last week at our meeting, we had a very big conversation about Act 127, where there was an Agency of Education representative there who was encouraging disadvantaged districts to take advantage of this 5%, which is why we're putting it forward in our budget. It's something we feel very strongly about, knowing that we are now in a disadvantaged district. I mean, I have concerns about why we are still weighting students and why there isn't a more comprehensive way to fund the Ed Fund, knowing that we are the second state, number two in the nation. It costs more to send your kid to school here than it does in 48 other states, which, which is a lot. And last week at the V S B A meeting, somebody did suggest, if we just added 1%, 1 cent to the sales and use tax, we could raise over $100 million, right? Like, is that a space that we could tap into and raise and start to fund the Ed Fund with that? Two, broadband. My goodness, look at us all, all glitching out. But no, really, thank you for being here and engaging in these conversations with us.
Any other questions or comments, board members, senators, reps? I have a question, pre, before my time, the Legislature picked a PCB number that is lower than any other number in the nation. And I'm just curious as to any data that supports the number? I haven't been able to find any.
Yeah, Edie, I can, or sorry, I can, I can jump in there. I think some of the, some of the questions, I think particularly that House Education has been very interested in, is where, you know, where is the science on this coming from? And are we rushing ahead with a testing program when some of the numbers that we're setting are potentially out of step, not only with the science, but with what other states and other school districts around the country might be dealing with? So I think that's like a very critical question for us to ask of our Agency of Natural Resources, who is sort of spearheading this particular program. But it's, I think I could say that my colleagues on the House Education Committee definitely share that concern. You know, it's something that we've talked about pretty extensively. And I'm not sure that we've really, I don't know if we've really received a robust answer to that issue that you raised.
Thank you, I appreciate the honesty with that. Katie?
Hey there. I also want to thank everybody for being here tonight. In some of the discussions we've had about things that we would like to make sure that you know, we have been thinking about is the mental health of our students and our teachers. And it is one of our six district priorities. Something that we have been talking about, though, is how mental health has sort of become this catchphrase. And what does it truly mean to address this problem? And what is the problem? And what do we see in our district? And so I just wanted to make sure that we shared with you that we're obviously all in agreement that students can't learn if their needs aren't being met. So that is definitely a priority for us. But something where we're really lacking in the state, and especially in our district, is that we do not have enough therapeutic collaborative educational programs. And we're seeing the impact of that on the students who need those programs, but as well as the students who are coexisting with that stress. So we want to make sure that something changes in the conversation that can truly address that more than something that sometimes feels like we're handing out Band-Aids. And the other thing that we wanted to talk about is that some of the solutions seem like they're based in what organizations can offer right now, rather than what is truly in the best interest of the students. So looking at how there are just such few organizations available to us, and what can we do as a state to increase those services and that availability? And so that was just something that I wanted to make sure that we mentioned before we close the conversation tonight.
Kevin, you want to add to that, or does it go a different direction? Different direction? Senator Lyons?
Yes, thank you. And Katie, thank you for your comments. In two years ago, I did work with folks in my committee, Senate Health and Welfare Committee, and our Education Committee, and then across with House members, including Jana, I think, on Act 197, which was, I was very concerned, as you are, about the mental health of our kids. And that, at that time, it was mostly due to the consequences of isolation and COVID. And the bill itself, I looked around, and I found $3 million to invest in children's and adolescent mental health improvement. Included in that $3 million ultimately were $500,000 to help teachers and to provide statewide workshops and opportunities for teachers to understand their own needs and to, you know, to help. It was interesting that when we passed the bill, we also asked for a report from the executive branch on the after-school program. We also included in our budget this year additional funds for the after-school program, which is, has a significant amount of data-informed work going on for children and for mental health improvement. So when you say, yeah, we need more, you're right, we've done a little. And the more we need is attention to have more school counselors, to pay them effectively, so that they're working with kids in middle school, particularly in middle school, or high school, or elementary school. When we're working with kids at that level, they have the appropriate level of counseling, what they need to have a full service to, to help them. You know, I can't say it any differently from that. We've also seen the effect of social media and the discussion that, that I don't know what's happening at MMU in terms of cell phone in terms of cell phone access and social media accents, access. But there is significant amount of research demonstrating the negative effects of having too much and of the wrong type of social media all the time for kids. And I think we're all aware and we're all affected by that with our own kids or grandkids. So the answer is yes. Our committee, Senate Health and Welfare, is paying particular attention to this. And we'll work again as much as we can across the aisle with our Education Committee. I think one of the disappointing things for me in all of this is the notion that the Agency of Education believes its, its role is to provide curriculum, rather than to provide developmentally important services for kids overall. So they have, provide both curriculum as well as mental health or other counseling support. That was said to me directly at one point by a, a member of the Agency of Education. I can't believe that anyone working in the agency actually believes that, nor can I believe that the teachers at school believe that. But it is something that we need to pay attention to. We need to pay attention to the intersection between development and learning and ultimately outcomes for kids. So there is a lot going on, and I hope that you will stay connected and give, send me some of your thoughts.
Great, thank you. I think I'm gonna set up some time to talk. Kevin?
Allison? Thanks for the extra time. And yeah, just, just want to thank everybody to attend, attending here tonight and staying dry. But one other important topic for me, I don't, I don't want to say for the board because we haven't really taken it up. But when we talk about equity, and we've done, you know, now they revised the weighting of students, there's another factor out there, which is, you know, compensation for our teachers in the state. And we currently compete pretty heavily, right amongst our, our various school districts. And so some districts pay this, some districts pay that, and different benefits. We, and a few years ago, we, we made the decision as a state to move healthcare at the state level. And that saved, I think, a lot of time amongst school board members. I, I don't know if it has saved a lot of money. It's hard to tell. But it's at least leveled the field when it comes to healthcare. And I think our school boards could, could be better served if we also weren't individually negotiating separate labor contracts all across the state for the same people. And, you know, wondering, when is, when is that next phase going to, to be looked at? When is that conversation going to be had? Because it, it feels like we're somewhere in the middle. The state is, you know, negotiating the healthcare benefits and the districts are, are doing the salaries. And is this, is this a long-term activity or is it a journey?
And Jenny, if you want to answer that or one of the other?
I put my hand up again because, you know, this is, this is an important issue, obviously. When we think about this type of negotiation, salary negotiation, we think about education overall, we're constantly confronted with a need to maintain local control. And we're, we're ultimately and always reminded how important local control is. You are very much embedded in local control at MMU and how critically important it is for you to be there and making those decisions. I'm not sure that we're ready to take all of the decision-making out of our local school board's hands. On the other hand, we do know that at the regional level, there are specific socioeconomic status and income levels that support schools. So Chittenden County, different from Franklin County, different from Addison County or Washington County. My, my thinking on this one has always been a conversation between and among school boards at this county level. So districts not necessarily giving up, but at the, but having some broader representation on county-wide negotiation. So for me, that, that's where I would start with this. I think that the discussion about having a state school teacher contract is so divisive. And we have such huge differences in economic ability and, and levels across the state that to take it, to move it from a regional conversation to a statewide conversation, at least for me at this point, it doesn't make sense. I don't think we would get anywhere. But I think your comment is a good one, and it is important to, to at least consider what could be a next step. And that's my suggestion, just one suggestion. I'm not tied into anything at this point. I think you need to be fair to everyone across the board.
Yeah, thank you. And I can appreciate that. I, I also feel like in today's situation that we've already talked about during this meeting, where because of what the state has put into place for the new, you know, funding, we have no local control this year. We only have one option, which, which is the option we just talked about. So I feel like the control is, is yielding towards monphile here. We, we have some decisions that we can make, but they're getting far and fewer based on the, based on the laws that are being passed. And I would gladly welcome at least regional, if that's the first step in that, in that process. Because I think, I think, I think, you know, we, we can do a better job more efficiently if we, if we went in that direction.
Allison?
I want to piggyback on what Katie said and also just call out that Katie is our community engagement chair. And she's done a great job in trying to raise awareness in our community for the implications of some of this legislative action. I'm so appreciative of you all for being here. And I would just ask that you join us in the effort to educate the community about the impact of what's coming as a result of some of these decisions. Can tell you, when I talk to folks in the community, if it's staff, staff are still feeling very demoralized coming out of the pandemic. People who are seeking services for their kids are still feeling very discouraged by the lack of, of resources that they're coming up against. Our administration is doing a great job, and certainly equity is essential. And we're all trying to do what we can to make sure there's statewide equity. But the problems that are right in front of us in the district are what are top of mind for the folks that we see every day, Katie especially out there in the community as the Chair of the Engagement Committee. So we need your help in educating our town, all of our towns about what's coming. And, you know, I hope you will continue to show up in these conversations and help us spread the word. Because as Kevin said, a lot of these decisions have been made at the state level, and now it's up to us to kind of put that puzzle together. We need your help providing that context, because what people are feeling is still acute, acute need right here in our district, which undoubtedly is a district that has a lot of advantages. But the, the challenges are very personal for folks when they're feeling them. So thank you so much for being here. Appreciate you.
Great, thank you. We're just about at time. I just don't know if any of our, any of our guests would like to have a final word here. Trevor, I don't know if you wanted to say hello and plead and excuse yourself. But if anybody wants a final word, please, please go ahead.
Thank you. This has been great. It's a pleasure to be here with each of you. And just keep us posted. And Katie, especially, your issue that you brought up, I think that's important. So we, we can work together on that and with Jana and the rest of us and E D.
I appreciate it being invited. Please invite me again in the future. I'll show up to every meeting, but I'm sure you'd get sick of me after a while. And I'm sorry I missed the tour tonight. So if that does happen in the future, I'd love to come out and see what you were all gonna look at. So please let me know when, when's a good time for me to show up.
Yeah, the tour was canceled. John and I are the only ones in the building, just in case community members showed up. Open reading lot, all of the teams, but we will make in the future. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll, I'll echo those thanks. Sorry, my internet's cutting out again. So hopefully folks can hear me say goodnight. I do, I do appreciate that this is a really challenging budgeting year for our district and absolutely agree with some of the sentiments around, you know, just making sure that folks kind of understand the context that we're working in. So I appreciate the really hard work and dedication of the folks on this call. So thank you.
Well, again, we really appreciate you taking the time out of this rainy evening to join us. And we appreciate you listening to the concerns that we have. And I'm sure I will catch each one of you separately to chat about this a little bit further. So thank you so much. Really appreciate your time. You're welcome to stay. You're welcome to go. That's your choice. Thank you. All right, are, do we want to go back to budget? Do we want to move on from that?
I mean, we pretty much, you know, it's totally up to the board. But we have, you know, pretty much summarized the high points and the informational slides. We wouldn't be really sharing much more with you than, than we have already. But it's up to you.
So I would say keep an eye on your email if we get an update from the Agency of Education on the numbers. That could make some big changes. If you're on the Finance Committee, definitely keep an eye out on your email because we might have to have some more meetings. I'm sure that makes everybody very happy. Yes.
Kevin? Sorry, the, just in terms of next steps and, and, you know, definitely defer to Lisa and you, the process here, but just ask the question. So the, the budget was presented to the board tonight. We've had a fair amount of conversation around the dials that we have and the choices that we have and what we've put into the draft. The next step for the board would come beginning of January with a decision to adopt the budget so that we can put it into the warning. As a Finance Committee member, I haven't heard any objections to what was presented. I heard questions, confusion, uncertainty, doubt, all other synonyms thereof, but nothing like we're going in the wrong direction. So just to remind folks, we have like one more, I think, one more round. But it's, it's really the final, the final round of developing a budget that the board would be willing to adopt.
Yes, Nathan?
Thanks, Kevin, for kind of laying that out for us. And I think, you know, for me, I always put a lot of, I put all my trust in the Finance Committee and the work that the administration does in pulling the budget together. I think knowing what a $6 million capital improvement plan, the details of that, I think is really important. Because I am not comfortable selling a budget with a ambiguous, and y'all know what the word is, without some real clarity. I also think it's really important that it's a capital improvement budget that looks towards the future. Hence, my, my, my questioning of a infrastructure expense of a fuel oil tank when the state has stated climate goals around fossil fuel usage. And so I'm really hopeful to see a capital improvement plan that goes beyond just kind of, I hear deferred maintenance, but I've also heard time and time again how well-maintained our school is. So I think there needs to be some clarity around what is the deferred maintenance? How is it going to be allocated? And then what is the plan, the future planning? Because this really is future planning, right? We are hedging a bet now for several years down the line. So.
Yeah, no, this is, this is maintenance that we can do next year or changes, improvements that we could make for our buildings next year. It's not a long term. It's a, it's a what can we actually get done now kind of a budget. So I, yeah, I don't, I don't want that to be a, something that got lost in this. Our, our, our plan is to put together items that we think we can get done in the next year.
And, and the reality of being able to do, I mean, $6 million in capital improvements, is it, is it actually feasible to have people to do the work?
All good questions. Yep.
And E D, we did talk about that. So we had the same conversation as a committee. The, the hope, the hope is, at this point, that we do have capacity to spend all of that money in one year on needed projects, improving our facilities and getting more work done so that three or four years from now, we won't have as much work to do. In the event that we're not able to do that work, we have always been able to move money into our capital reserve fund, which we can use in the future. The, the practical nature of asking the administration to put together a $6 million project list in two weeks over Christmas winter break is probably asking quite a bit. However, we, we have seen a draft bond, which was put together pre-COVID that talked about a lot of major improvements to our infrastructure. And I would think using that as a, as a, as a basis, right? For what are some of the things that we would be able to achieve next year would, would be the right spot to, to start.
Yeah. And also more recently, the state did a survey of facilities. And so we have that information too. And that was just done a few, a month or so ago, a couple of months ago. So yeah, so we do have a lot of really good information about what needs to be improved in our buildings. Anything else on the budget? I think Kevin laid that out really clearly for us. So January 8, which is our next meeting, I'm pretty sure that's a Monday, is when we will bring the budget to the board with our warrant, with our warrants, so that our folks to go on town meeting, to do everything we're gonna vote on for town meeting day, our warrants.
Oh, a warning.
A warning, thank you. All of that will be at the next meeting. So please make sure you have the time to review it. And then if something comes up between this meeting and next, reach out to Lisa or to me or to John or to Nicole to get more information. Okay, I'm not seeing any questions. All right, next item. Can I get a motion to approve the new library policy? Thank you, Heather. Go ahead.
Second?
Thank you, Lisa. The policy was presented at our last meeting by the, by the librarians in the district, I'm assuming. Does anybody have any discussion on that? All right, all in favor of approving the new library policy? Give me a thumb or an eye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, the policy is approved unanimously. Thank you, everybody. Okay, preparation for Board Governance Compliance Review. So we have agreed, this is one of our board policies or a group of board policies. And we have agreed to review these once a year, make sure that we are acting in a way that is working for the district, that we are doing our jobs, that we are communicating properly and all of the other pieces. In addition, starting the next school year, there are also statewide quality governance standards that we will be needing to submit a report on and how we do that. We have a meeting, you know, when it is, John, and we're gonna talk about this.
I'm trying to look at the board calendar.
Yeah, so I was just about to call up here.
But if I do that.
That's right, I've got it.
I'm doing the screening too. I'm doing the screening too.
We will be reviewing this at the January 27 meeting. So the end meeting at the end of January. So what I would really like, and I believe last year that Kevin and Andrew led this process for us, and what that entails is you can interrupt me, Kevin, if you need to, is asking the boards to to do the survey, modifying the survey if it's necessary, having the board actually fill out the survey. So how many people to get it done, which hopefully everyone will do the first time we see the email, compiling the results and leading a discussion on that at the January 22 meeting. Anybody interested in doing this? Are you really excited to do it or want to do it with a partner? Looking for volunteers?
Amazing how many cameras turned off.
I know.
Don't look me in the eyes.
I'll date myself, Bueller.
Susan, this is right up your alley, surveying people about how they feel. And come on, don't you want to help out with this one?
Oh, Kevin, I'm going to be out collecting signatures for my petition so I can run for the remainder of this term. No, I would do it. I would work with someone. I cannot take it on by myself. But if someone who has done this before or someone wants to work with me, I will. I'd be happy to team up with someone.
I'll bet Andrew would do it with you. I think I'm going to volunteer him because he's not here tonight. But I bet he would do that with you. So if you're willing, then we'll we'll say yes. Thank you, Susan, and thank you, Andrew. And if Andrew really can't, then we'll figure that out. If anybody.
Kevin can repay me later.
Oh, yeah.
Because he volunteered you. If anybody didn't get a chance to look at the survey and thinks that there's something missing from that, something that doesn't something is not captured about how we do our work or how how the board is functioning, please reach out to me or to Susan or to Andrew on that so I can get all of that information captured. Yes, Tara.
Do you envision these to be open ended questions? Or is it a scale of one to five? Five being you feel great, one being you don't feel great, and somewhere in between?
So Tara, I attached a policy governance assessment tool. And that has a scale. Right? I just offered that as a resource in case somebody wanted to 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 use that.
So then would we do the policy governance survey instead of the questions that were laid out?
That'd be up to Susan and Andrew.
I thought we had a.
We do. We have a survey.
Yeah, this one. Yeah. Yeah, the board self-assessment is the but the other one was.
I can't remember if that was.
I recall, and you might have mentioned it, but the point of the the survey is to see if there are any areas where we need to dig deeper, where we feel like there might be some areas of compliance where we're lacking in terms of our, you know, the way which we're working as a board. So I think the questions were developed in a way that was, you know, asking on a on a some kind of scale. I think we did this once in the past. But on some kind of scale, how well do we comply? I don't think it was yes or no. But at the end of it, we say, okay, majority of the board comfortable with how we're operating. And if there's some areas where we're not as a board, then those would be areas where we'd spend more time to try to figure out where are the gaps and how do we close them?
Yeah, and we did this a year ago, like Edie was just saying, Kevin, you led the conversation at Smiley. It didn't go over well. And then we didn't do anything with those. Yes, yes, you had the unfortunate shingles. And nobody gave you any sympathy. But we didn't do anything with those results. And I wonder if it's because it was so not well received at that meeting that everything just kind of got backburnered. And then is the same thing going to happen if we ask the same questions again?
Well, I I think and it was a while ago and but I think a lot of the feedback was around one area that was not assessed, which was, does the board have goals? There was a lot of conversation about goals for the district. And I do think a lot of work was put into that particular feedback over the last 12 months. So when we say, when you say, I don't think anything was done about it, maybe maybe we haven't got to the point where you would say we're happy with our district goals. But I think we have spent a lot of time on that topic between now and then.
But are they district goals or are they board goals? I think that's where we started to get at, right? Like, are they goals we have for ourselves as a board and in our individual committees? Or are they the district priorities that we're supporting?
And now we have both, right? We have committee goals. We have things that we have every every committee has different things that they're working on. And as a board, we're working to support the district into reaching the district goals. So I think that I think that we have developed a lot more of that since then. So that feedback did get used and is, yeah. Yeah, but I think you're right. I think that the questions can be fine to some. And probably a scale rather than a yes, no would be really helpful for folks.
Thanks.
I also think, having gone through it once, I think there was also some feedback, if I recall, that we didn't really know what why we were being asked the questions and what they were leading to. So we repeat the process with familiar faces. I think this time around, it'll be a little bit more I don't know, useful or valuable or less confusing.
All right. So if anyone looks at the questions, because yes, we those are the questions that were used both from the previous survey. The survey results are still available to folks in Google's Slides, Google Survey, Google Forms. That's what it is. In Google Forms, if folks wanted to take a look at that. And thank you, Susan. Thank you, Andrew, for volunteering. I would be happy to have a meeting about it if we wanted, but I have a feeling that Andrew can kind of take this, take the lead and, yeah, just look there. All right. Thank you, everybody. We're good with that one? Yes? Yes, not okay. All right, next on the agenda are the committee reports. Why don't we start with the RAB? Just to throw a little wrench into the.
Is that my cue, Edie?
Yep.
Luckily, John was also there. So, John, if I forget anything, and Edie didn't make it as well. The RAB met this week, last week, because it's already only Monday last week. It was somewhat familiar in that there were some tech priorities discussed. There was also sort of an examination of the CTE recommendations and the study that was, was it was it the legislature that requested the study, Edie?
Yep. Yeah, there were. Last year. Yeah. Go ahead.
You know, I think there was a little bit of a, you know, a little bit of a conversation about like, what are the things that the tech centers locally can handle? I thought it was very interesting that continuing work to coordinate the statewide calendar. And I think that focused more on professional development days, half days, while we have a pretty consistent schedule. That is something that is different amongst different districts. I think there was also how do you align some of the school holiday breaks? I think Addison County being the one that kind of steps out of line with our school calendar. You know, I I I think some of the concerns that have been raised before around governance and input around tech centers is still lacking. It 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 does feel still very much like an Essex Westford School District and a Burlington School District decision around what programs are happening, cost per student. And I think that there is still a tremendous need for a different type of structure to 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 be a more inclusive budgeting process. I think those were my big takeaways. John, Edie, did you have other ones?
Yeah, they they talked about tuition is probably going to go up. Some of the enrollment has, I think, dropped in both programs. Essex talked about their change in the school day has influenced some of that. And then they, you know, really at the end started talking about, should they be looking at changing the governance structure or the funding first? And we didn't really come to, you know, any consensus on that, but that was the discussion. They're they're doing some really good things. I think I would want to add that. And there's some good leadership in the tech schools. And so, you know, we certainly have students that benefit from it for sure.
I was only at the second half of the meeting, so I.
I would say, just in terms of that comment, John, is about like, where is the future of tech in Chittenden County? Is still, I think, a concern. What are the important areas that tech should be covering? You know, I think it it's interesting, you know, the Regional Advisory Board does invite members of the business community. There's been one there was or there was one person there who's been a school board member and also is also now, you know, sort of representing the business community. But meeting four times a year doesn't really cut it to really get into depth. And I think there's some missing pieces. I had suggested Department of Labor is never at these conversations. And and they have a lot of important information around trends, job openings, job opportunities. So I think that there's, you know, there's a lot more that could be happening in terms of governance around the tech centers. I think that how that happens, as John said, that governance or funding, like which happens first.
Great, thank you. Katie, Community Engagement.
So we were supposed to meet earlier this week, but we did not have a meeting because we did not have a quorum. So the next meeting is January 8 at 8:00 AM. And I think something that would be really important for everybody to do after listening to this meeting would be to do a front porch forum post with a link to this meeting for our communities to really hear some of the responses that we had from our senators and representatives. And I think it's going to be important for us in the coming weeks to make an effort to communicate with our select boards about some of these budgetary pressures because I know in Richmond, it's becoming a perfect storm. So I it's hard to imagine that that's not going to be the case in in other places. And part of our committee is really to encourage all of you to be reaching out to your community members and communicating this information. And so going beyond front porch forum and and actually squeezing in a couple more evening hours to attend a select board meeting or meet with them on whenever time can allow would be really great. So those are my thoughts. And our next agenda will probably be addressing some of those things, but also community comments was a priority and a goal for us. So that's something that we're working on, just trying to figure out how to create a sort of procedure for how community comments are addressed and how that that communication is then disseminated across the board. So we all are sort of on the same page. That's it.
Great, thank you. Finance and Facilities. I think we just had a big update. What do you think, Lisa?
I think so as well.
Great. HR Committee, we have been meeting furiously. We will have an update at the next meeting, I believe. We're getting there. DEIC? Tara?
We met. So we met on the 17th to go over the training that everyone participated in. I can't say everyone. I wasn't there. Something awful hit my house. But we discussed the training at that meeting. Then then the training happened. And then we met on December 8 to debrief the training. And I heard very positive feedback, and I'm really grateful for that. And I'm grateful for everyone who could attend. The committee is going to start to review the PG4s, Edie, like you had suggested in one of our previous meetings, to start reviewing them for equity, which probably will tie in nicely to the survey that Susan's going to be doing. You know, because if if something comes out of that where we need to update our our policy governance policies, then I think it's a win win. Next meeting is in January.
Great, thank you. The SBA Legislative kind of had that at the meeting. Is there anything, Tara, Diane, that we need to touch on on that?
No, just, like I said, the Agency of Ed Representative was there. And we talked about Act 127. And at the beginning of the meeting, we actually talked to an NSBA attorney about the Mid Vermont Christian School case that is working its way through. It was my first meeting, too. It was dense.
On that note, there was a great article in Digger today that folks might want to read about the lawsuits in Vermont and in the state. So putting that out there. Thank you, everybody. Minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from November 13?
I'd like to approve the minutes from 11:13 to 23:03.
Thank you. Heather, was that Lisa had a second? Great, thank you. Any questions, any on the minutes? All in favor? An eye, some kind of motion to let me know that you're in favor of approving? Thank you. Any opposed? Any extensions? Okay, minutes approved unanimously. Thank you, everybody. Any other business? Yes, Katie.
Feel free to pass on this, but I have to say, in the past three hours, I've probably received 15 text messages of parents curious about what tomorrow looks like and just also any kind of update on our our schools and our towns and our kiddos, given the flooding that happened around our district today would be appreciated.
I'm really glad you brought that up in the queue.
Yeah, I mean, I'll be up early with.
I'm going to back up before you answer that. For those who don't have kids in the school today, all after school events were camcording. And we had some flooded roads. We have a number of flooded roads in the district. And some homes are having problems. I think the internet interstate exit is still open, I think. But, yeah, okay. But yeah, we were concerned about buses making it to students' homes under roads and all of those exciting things that happen when we have freeze, thaw, lots of water. So go ahead.
So the, the, if it doesn't, if it stops raining, and I don't know if it's raining or not outside, if it has stopped raining, and the, the rivers are, that we're concerned about are supposed to crest, start going down. If, if that happens, then we'll be able to open school. But if they are still flooded, you know, that we're going to either need to have a, a delay or we're going to need to cancel school. So it's a, you know, it's a challenging day today. We had a power outage out in Smiley. And we had a number of road issues. Thankfully, we were able to put together a plan and get people pretty much home on time. And, and safely, everybody safely. And we, we sent out, you know, a number of communications today, just letting parents know about what was going on. So right now, you know, there's, I'm hoping that the, the rivers will recede enough so we can safely pass on them. But I won't know for sure until tomorrow morning. Good news is they're supposed to start receding.
Thanks so much, John. I know it was a really long day. And I was trying to communicate with many people in our district, just at, at that pickup time about where roads were closed and, and whatnot. But our pickup in Richmond, although was very busy, seemed to go really smoothly. So kudos to everybody behind the scenes on that.
Thank you. Weather, oh my gosh. It's been very challenging.
Any other, other business? John and I talked on Friday and I said, I think Monday is going to be okay. So it's my fault. I apologize. All right, I don't see any other business. Thank you, everybody. Really appreciate tonight. You're really good questions. Thoughtful responses from the, from our legislators. Yeah, this was a really good meeting. Really appreciate it. January 8th is another jam-packed scheduled board meeting. Please make time to review all the documents. It'll be a full budget review along with something else, but I don't remember because I looked at it earlier and my brain is now full of these meetings. So have a great evening. Can I get a motion to adjourn, please?
So move, so move.
Thank you, Ethan. Thank you for seconded Kevin. All in favor? Give me a thumb up or a hand up and then check out. So thank you so much. See you all in January. Happy New Year.